This has to do with the August 6th accident that I was involved in up at the intersection of Summit and Union. I have provided you with photographs, I hope you've all got them, and a statement. If you'll look at this photograph first, you'll see where the boat and the SUV was sitting. And I found out recently that that owner of those rigs either has a residence across the street or a business across the street. And you'll notice the high hedge. This is a, in this photograph, where I'm standing is approximately where the front end of my vehicle would be. I would be about six feet further back and two feet lower. So that, I wouldn't be able to see because of this. And you'll also notice in that photograph from where I'm standing, you can barely see a car way up by the tree here going north. And behind the SUV, there's a pickup. You can just see the top of it. And again, I'm sitting six feet back and approximately two feet lower. The police officer, in his report, had the SUV and the boat on the curb, which would make it even worse. And he didn't show the vehicle that was crossing Summit at the same time I was crossing. That's the only reason that I was crossing is because I couldn't see, because of that hedge, I couldn't see up here. And so when she started, or whatever, he or she, I thought it was a woman, started to cross, that's when I crossed. And I've got a feeling that the individual that hit me actually didn't want to hit her or that vehicle, so he came over into the northbound lane. And when I went past the boat, that's when he hit me. My request to this council is that from here on out, no parking signs be put from Summit clear to the bridge on both sides. So that view is not blocked. That is a bad intersection. There's been five or six accidents there in the last three years, and three of them with injuries. And I've talked to people that said, "Well, I had my car totaled out there when I was a young man," and so on and so forth. So it's been a bad intersection for years. And like I say, the only reason I was crossing when I did is because I saw that other car coming across, and I figured, okay, if they think it's clear, then I'm going to go. So basically, that's what I'm here for. And I hope that the city attorney takes that into account.
Thank you, Mr. Loos. Thanks for taking the time to come visit with us.
I am the city attorney, as you know, and I'm not sure what that statement about me taking that into account is.
Well, because I was told by the police officer it was my fault, and I would be getting a ticket from you.
Okay. And you would get it from the city attorney's office. I think I gave you the name of the prosecutor from my office, and you would talk to that prosecutor, but you also have an avenue to talk to the judge about it, too.
Okay, I haven't talked to that prosecutor yet.
Oh, his name is Joe Elling.
So you suggest that I present this to them, too?
You can talk to him, but I think your best audience is going to be the judge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Loos. All right. We'll just take a couple minutes, and we'll get started with the regular council meeting Do you all please rise as Pastor David Foss of Bethel Lutheran Church leads us in an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, good evening, and let's join in prayer. Lord Jesus, thank you for this evening that you've given to us and this day, a day that you've been with us every step of the way. We say thank you. And we pause before the meeting tonight to say how grateful we are that you know us, that you love us, that you hear us, and all that we say, even what we don't say. Jesus, the men and women here in this room are here tonight to talk about the issues that concern the people of this community. And they've got a lot on their plate. And we thank you, first of all, for their service, and we ask that you would, in their deliberations, make them wise, help them to think rightly and fairly about what's before them, help them to see issues clearly, make good decisions. And we ask that you would bless the community of Fergus Falls. We think especially of students and teachers, staff, administrators, as the school year is now underway. And we ask your favor on all our community in that regard. Help us to live at peace with one another and to conduct our lives in a way that adds favor and blessing to the people of this community. So thank you. And thank you for the leaders again, the officials in this room. Bless them, their families, the attendant staff that are here. Help them to know your favor in their public service and in their private lives. And Jesus, we pray that your will would be done in our community, and we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under your honor, indivisible, without any injustice
Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our acting city administrator, Bill Sonmore. Bill, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, I don't believe so. I think we're good.
The one that we're going to, that I'm going to make is we're going to, item number four under the consent agenda, we're going to pull that, and we're just going to take that off until the Greater Fergus Falls has an opportunity to discuss that, and then we'll bring that back at a later time. So. With that, I would entertain a motion, accepting, adopting the amended agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. So hey, we have a public hearing for the tax abatement at 1174 Western Avenue, and I will call on Nick Leonard from Attletown County to tell us about the project. Good evening, Nick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Nick Leonard. I'm here in behalf of the Attletown County Board of Commissioners. Thanks for taking a few minutes to hear a little bit about this project and holding the public hearing. With me this evening is, with me this evening is Luke Wentland, who I'll introduce and let him tell you a little bit about their company, North Star Behavioral, who ultimately will be leasing the 60-bed treatment facility at 1174 Western Avenue from Attletown County. So in your last committee, the whole meeting, I provided just a little bit of background. There's a memo in your packet that outlines kind of the history of this project. In short, Attletown County owns a property at, or a facility at 1174 Western Avenue. We've had that facility for over 10 years, which has been used by the state. And for a pass, approximately the past year or so, we've been working with the state and other entities to try and get that facility back up and operational. It's a mental health and chemical dependency facility is how it ultimately, why it was built, and certainly we have lots of those needs in this region and can utilize the services. So we are requesting abatement because the facility has, for the past decade, been owned by the county and utilized by the state, and so thus, there hasn't been taxes at this property. And frankly, in order to get a for-profit entity in here such as North Star, abatement was one of the economic development tools that we had to consider. We have signed a lease with North Star, a five-year lease. We look forward, and we're anxious to get them up and operational in that facility. One of the conditions of that five-year lease is abatement by the county and the city. And so with that, I'm going to let Luke tell you a little bit about North Star, and then would be happy to answer any questions about either the abatement. In your packet, there's an abatement run, a 10-year abatement run. There's a memo related to it, as well as, I believe, a resolution for Mariupol, our bond counsel associated with this project.
Good evening. My name is Luke Wentland. I'm one of the owners and founders of North Star Behavioral Health, as well as our sister company, Bridges Minnesota. We employ a little over 800 people right now in the Twin Cities area. We're privileged and honored to get this opportunity to help serve the community. We work with individuals that are suffering from opioid use disorder, mental health conditions, et cetera, from schizophrenia, severe persistent mental illness, traumatic brain injury, et cetera. Like I said, we're privileged and honored to do what we get to do every single day to help those folks recover, and we're super excited about this opportunity within the community. We, at full capacity, to begin right out the gates, will have a hiring of probably about 20 individuals, but then when we're at full capacity with all of our beds, we'll be about 50, somewhere around that ballpark. So I think it's a good tool for the local economy as well, for individuals with the job force. So we're, like I said, we're just super excited to have this opportunity to be a part of the community, be ingrained in the community. We're looking for properties right now for individuals to come up and move and help lead this organization for us as well. So we want to be a big part of this community, not just operate a business here and call it good. So I just want everyone to know that as well. So at any rate, I'm super excited about this. If there's any questions, I certainly could answer those as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Nick, just a quick question, and we'll let the council ask questions before we open the public hearing, but I assume in the agreement, in the abatement agreement, it needs to be run as a treatment facility in order to receive the abatement from the city, correct?
Correct. So, Your Honor, council members, and just for those of you that haven't been through this process before, tonight, we're looking for a resolution to support the abatement, but ultimately, the nuts and bolts of this agreement will be ironed out in an abatement agreement. I think staff have started to see some draft copies of that, but we would intend to bring that back as early as two weeks from today, two weeks from yesterday, at your next council meeting, but you're correct.
To actually approve the final.
To approve the abatement agreement. Tonight is a resolution authorizing the abatement up to an X amount, and.
Sure. Any other questions, Nick? No?
Fairly straightforward.
Scott?
I was looking at the graph and trying to understand if the abatement sunsets or ends at some point, or it's long-term forever, once it's in place, it lasts, and that's the way it operates forever. Is there a point at which the abatement ends?
Your Honor, councilman, yeah, there are. So the abatement agreement is based on a 10-year run with, and so it would, no matter what, it is designed to end after 10 years. But the reality is, is there are two conditions within the abatement agreement. One is if we sell the facility, and that's ultimately the goal, we'd like North Star to be the outright owner of this facility. If they purchase it, we'll reevaluate whether or not that abatement is still necessary as an economic tool. The other thing that happens, at the end of their five-year lease, we will reevaluate, and that would have to be extended, and we would have to determine that that is necessary to extend that abatement agreement. So short answer is at five years or at a sale, those will be evaluated, and then at the end of 10 years, it would terminate.
Okay. And I thought I understood that from the description, but the graph has dates going well out into 2040, and so I thought, well, maybe there was something I was missing.
Any other questions, Nick? If not, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the tax abatement at 1174 Western Avenue for North Star Behavioral, please step to the podium, state your name. Seeing no one, we will close the hearing. It's back to the council. Would someone like to offer a resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. There are no bids to award this evening. There are no petitions or communications. Under the consent agenda, we have 10 items. Again, item four is being pulled. We have 10 items on the agenda, and if anyone would like to speak to any of those items individually, we can remove them. Or I would entertain a route.
I'll entertain that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, pardon me, tonight, we have the first reading of ordinance 86, 7th series, which is the rental registration ordinance, and I would call on our city, I'm sorry, our city attorney to comment on that before we introduce that ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor. If we recall back on August 19th, the city administrator reported to council some of the staff recommendations that followed from the conversation that the public had, the council has had over the last several weeks. And so at your meeting from last, on the 19th, you instructed me to draft a proposed ordinance with these changes and amendments in mind. So before you tonight is such an ordinance that I believe you've received a couple versions, redlined version and a clean version, that shows the adjustments that have been made to the proposed ordinance. And so with that, if this is something that you wish to proceed with, it can be offered as a first reading at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Rolf?
One question, Your Honor.
Certain, yes.
And I apologize, we should have thought about this earlier, and it might be covered, but obviously, there's some kind of, tonight, we're kind of approving the delinquencies in people not paying. Is that something that is within the ordinance, that if you, if you are delinquent, that you should go on the inspection program?
You would not be authorized to be granted a registration if you're delinquent.
Right.
Yep.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Delinquent in what?
Well, in like, obviously, you know.
Yep.
People have got snow removal and grass mowing and.
These would be another one.
Right. So if you're behind on any payment, then you wouldn't be exempt from the program.
And you would like that included if it isn't in the ordinance?
Correct.
I will double-check it. I think it is, but I will double-check that, and what I hear from you, Mr. Hicks, council member Hicks, is that you want registrations to be conditioned on being current.
Correct. Yeah.
Correct. Thank you.
Correct. Yeah. With that, I would.
You introduce it?
Introduce it.
Okay, so it's been introduced this evening. If there's any other questions of the council, tonight would also be the night for public to weigh in. And then the way I would see this going forward, it's been introduced, council has an opportunity to suggest any changes. We also have the issue of the fees that we need to be discussed before a final resolution would be approved. So tonight, if the public, if anyone would like to speak to this ordinance, you're welcome to come to the podium. We will have a final vote on this at the earliest, two weeks from now, depending on whether or not the finance department is ready to present recommendations or options for the fee schedule to go along with this ordinance. So with that, if anyone from the public would like to speak to the ordinance, please step to the lectern, state your name and your address. All right. Seeing none, we will move on.
Guys, I have a question of clarity for, I think I had the same thought he had, but he stole my thunder, but, so if somebody's opting out of the current program, and they're on the delinquent notice for snow removal, all those things that were discussed, they then would have to opt in, they would automatically be enrolled into the program?
Nope.
Do you understand that right?
They would not be eligible for reregistering their property.
As a non-exempt?
As any. Period.
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 Okay. And that's acceptable?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number two.
I think that.
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry.
This is the same, this next item is the same topic, just more a vote on it, is that right?
Oh.
Okay, then I'll comment on that once you introduce it.
The summary publication, so the next item? Yeah, so, so item number two is a resolution approving the summary publication ordinance 86, 7th series. Rolf, just want to clarify what that is.
Bless you. We don't have to do that tonight if you don't, oh, we don't have to do that tonight if you don't want to. Basically, it's a way to save the city some money by not having to publish the entire ordinance, word for word. You have to pass a resolution that authorizes a summary of the ordinance to be published in the newspaper. So that's what that is, and you can pass it tonight, or you can pass it next time. It doesn't really matter, it's just, but we do need a resolution that authorizes that.
Okay, I understand that now, and I guess my comments center to the first point that I should have raised.
And we'll give you, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. In fact, would someone like to offer a resolution for the summary publication of this ordinance? Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Scott, go ahead. This now is as good a time as any.
Okay. I expected there would probably be members of the public that would want to have something to say about this registration deal, because we did have quite a lot of comment, you know, when it was in the other presentations. When this comes up for a vote to go forward, at this point, my vote's going to be no. And the reason is, I would rather see this continue as is now than be changed with the goal apparent in the changes leading to 100% inspection of all rental properties in town eventually. It's not that way initially. There's some grandfathering and whatnot. There are a few good things in the notes and the changes that have been suggested, but overall, I think that the city having this intention to move to 100% inspection of rental properties is an overreach, and I'm not going to support that. I think it's kind of a way to add expense and trouble, basically, to people that don't need it and don't want it. And I think the initial idea to have a registration just for the safety purposes of knowing who to contact for a given rental unit, that makes sense, and I don't have a problem with that. But the inspection part of this is getting intrusive, and I think that those who really need the inspections, that qualify for HRA and things like that, let that happen, that's fine. I don't see the city needing to put another layer of this kind of government action into this, into this life of the people of our town.
Thank you, Scott. Any other comments? If not, we have a resolution on the table just approving the summary publication of this ordinance. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Item number three is a first reading of ordinance 90, 7th series, sales tax ordinance. Bill, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Evening, Bill.
And council, in your packet, you have a new ordinance for the local option sales tax. This, all this really is, is replacing the current ordinance we have on file for our local option sales tax. That's the sales tax we're using to fund the library, so we're making the debt service payments on the library. That ordinance was passed back in 17 as a result of that election in 2016 approving that. So the goal of this is, is with new court cases out there as far as online sales, this ordinance puts it in place that we can collect that local option sales tax on all sales that happen in Fergus Falls, even the online sales. The previous ordinance really was in place for brick and mortar, if you had a business that had a physical location here. But here, this will capture, you know, all those sales. Now, which is taking place, we've had the laws adopted in the state of Minnesota to collect sales tax and local taxes on all online sales as well. And this recommendation comes down from the Department of Revenue, actually, and the League of Minnesota Cities. So our bond counsel redrafted this resolution. We sent it to the Department of Revenue for review, and then we brought that, their recommendations before you today to kind of make sure we had it all covered even before bringing it to you, so.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions of Bill? If not, would someone like to introduce that?
I'll introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, we just need an introduction tonight, but we will also have a, entertain similar resolution as we passed with ordinance 86, 7th series for a summary publication of ordinance 90, 7th series that was just introduced. Would someone like to offer that?
I'll, Your Honor.
Anthony, Caroline, thank you. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Item number five is another first reading. It's ordinance 91, 7th series, dealing with tobacco, which is simply aligning our ordinance with the countywide Tobacco 21 ordinance that was passed through the county. Anything to add on that? Just making our ordinance line with the county. Right. Which supersedes ours, correct? Right. Someone like to introduce that?
I'll introduce.
Thank you, Justin. Now entertain a resolution approving the summary publication of that ordinance.
I'll do that, Your Honor.
Justin, thank you.
One second.
Thanks, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That item is approved, that resolution, I'm sorry, is approved. Item number seven is a resolution accepting a donation of an updated HVAC and filter system for the Gun Club building located at 508 West Adolphus Avenue from the Fergus Falls Rifle and Pistol Club. I'll call on Steve Plaza just to talk to Spud, and I know there's some members of the Fergus Falls Rifle and Pistol Club, if any of you would like to speak to that as well.
Good morning, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and City Council. We were approached by the Rifle and Pistol Club a few weeks ago. They are looking to improve the HVAC system for indoor rifle range to meet state and federal requirements. They're willing to do all the work and pay for all the bills. They entered into an agreement with the city in 1980, I believe you have a copy of that, and they're just doing their due diligence to make sure that agreement is still in good standings, and there are no rumblings about kicking them out of the buildings, and they're 668 members. We under, this is just authorizing for them to do improvements. We understand that, I explained to them that the improvements would need to go through the city bidding process and meet all of those requirements as well.
Sure.
So I don't know if anybody from the club wants to come up and speak, or if you have any specific questions.
You know, I just spoke with a couple members of the club in, over the past couple weeks, and I guess they just wanted assurance that if they're going to invest this money in that facility, in that building, that the city doesn't have any intentions of, like you say, kicking them out.
Correct.
Which, there's none that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
So, guys, is that accurate?
Yep.
Yeah. So we appreciate your investment in that, in that, in that building, and if you have any questions of us, but does council have any questions for either Steve or any members of the club?
You're spending about $100,000 on this.
Come up and talk, Gary, and introduce yourself. I'm told Gary has been a member for 50 years, and he laid the first brick down in the building, so.
Good evening, Gary.
Good evening. I'm Gary Wall. I've been with the club for about 50 years, and we try to make some upgrades out there. We put in a furnace, we put in a water heater, we've put in lighting in, with T8 bulbs and stuff, so, as money allows us to do this. This is a relatively big item.
Yeah.
It's going to take most of my, or most of our funds. So we were hopeful that you were comfortable with us. We do an awful lot of things during the winter months. We're using it six days a week. We've got Pistol Club, we've got a Junior Rifle Club, we've got a Senior Rifle Club, we do a half-range night thirsty's. In addition to that, we do permit to carry, we've got some basic handgun classes that we run. When we first went into the agreement, Isan Outh was in, and he wanted it to be kept fairly affordable, which we have done. We were charging $3 a night for members. If you went to Fargo and were shooting, you'd have $25 an hour.
Sure.
That's quite inexpensive. The membership and the shooting fees do not pay our bills, but the permit to carry has has helped us to put a little nest egg away that we can upgrade a little bit as necessary. Right now, we feel it's a very necessary time to do this.
Certainly. Well, we appreciate your investment in that building and what you do for the community and services provided. And the relationship that we have is strong, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Gary.
Your Honor?
Yes, Jim.
I'll offer the resolution to accept their donation.
Thanks, Jim. Someone like to second that? Thank you, Justin. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution accepting a proposal from US Aquatics for the preliminary design work for an aquatics project. And I will call on Ryan Miller to address this, and I know Bridget Leonard is also here to answer
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. At the July 31 Committee of the Hall meeting, the aquatics committee introduced their recommendation for the next step to consult with, a consultant to advance the aquatic facility designing plans. On the August 5th, so the council meeting, the council authorized the aquatics committee to seek a proposal from US Aquatics for those services for design and, design and development of an aquatics project. At the August 28 Committee of the Hall meeting, the council made a recommendation to accept a proposal from US Aquatics for design and preliminary design services at a cost of $45,000 for Phase 1 of a multi-phase plan for design and development of the future aquatic facility. There were some questions that were brought up at that committee of the Hall meeting on August 28. I did hand out an updated proposal from US Aquatics that answers one of the questions that was brought up about not to exceed costs for travel expenses. I did reach out to US Aquatics, and they added in a not to exceed of $2,500 for travel expenses for the full proposal of all phases of the plan. So again, it's a proposal from US Aquatics for design and development services. Right now, we have just Phase 1 to, I guess, get started with upon approval of the proposal. And all future phases would be approved after completion and acceptance of the Phase 1 for 45, I'm sorry, for $47,500.
Thank you, Ryan. Questions? First of all, someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Caroline. Justin, questions for Ryan?
I've got a number of comments I'd like to make. Not necessarily questions for you, Ryan. I wouldn't, don't necessarily expect that you would have the answers, or that anybody would, really.
Go ahead, Scott.
But first of all, I'd like to say that I strongly support the development of an aquatic center in town. I'm really hoping that something like this can happen. And when it was time to run for election here, that was one of the goals that I saw, something that I could get behind and really wanted to strongly support. I appreciate the efforts that the Aquatic Center Committee has made. It's clear that they've put a fair amount of time into this with meetings and legwork and everything. And frankly, they've put together a nice plan. I think the pool design with the slides and all that is something that people would really enjoy. I would like to go there. I think it would be a fantastic thing. At our meeting on August 28, I think the conversation...
Would it be possible to kind of speak close to your mics?
Oh, I thought it was close enough.
Difficult to hear you.
I'll move up a bit. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. At our meeting on August 28, I felt that our discussion was kind of abbreviated and cut short, and some of the questions that I had weren't able to be raised at that time, so I'm afraid now is the time to do it. And the questions run from how the surveys were done to how some of the answers were developed with site selection, how were you paid for it, and things of that nature. Couple of the specific things that I'll point out, in the survey that was done, the number of survey participants was a little over 1,500, which is, sounds like a pretty good number. Of that number, 61% were within the city limits, and 39% were outside the limits. And I think that for the potential users, this is a good mix of who might be using it and who might have input into what they would like to see. And for that purpose, I think it was helpful. But I don't think it answers the question as to who's going to pay for it. Even though the survey has a high percentage of people within the city limits included in it, a high percentage of the people in the survey weren't necessarily represented in how they're going to use it. And what I mean by that is, in particular for senior citizens, the number of responses out of that 1,500 that came from people over 65 was only 5%. And yet, the population of Fergus Falls is over 22% with people over 65. In fact, other people over 55 was only 14%. 55 to 64 was only 14%. So we've got less than 20% of the people over 55 being polled in the survey, and yet, the survey results have got much younger sampling, you know, people, sampling of much younger people. And I think when you've got 23% of the people going to be asked to pay for this thing, but only 5% of them represented in the survey, that's a, that's too big of a spread to just accept it without a little bit more information as to how that was done and how, how it might be defended. I know there were people from all of these various different, what would you say, sections in town, or representatives of different groups of people in town, and so there were probably some voices speaking to what the seniors would be looking for. But just in the raw numbers, it doesn't really look good, frankly. At our meeting on the 28th, I expected that we would probably hear some new information. When this was first presented a couple years ago, the city council at that time was happy to receive the report, but then turned around and asked the committee to take it further and put together something with a year-round use, not just an outdoor-only. Ended up including another consultant that came in, Katrina Lynn, and that recommendation was to try and expand the project to bring in more community support. And yet, now when this comes back and is presented to us, it's essentially the same thing that was presented two years ago. A number of sites were considered and ruled out, and some for very good reason, I imagine. And as I've read through all of the notes, and I did read the entire 94-page report twice, there were good reasons to reject some of the sites, and I understand that. But some of them really had a high score, nearly as good as the ones that had been chosen. Red Sox Park and Roosevelt Park and the Levy, they were ruled out immediately. There were other sites that were never even on the list to even be considered that seemed like they ought to have been. Even though they may have been ruled out quickly, they, they weren't even on the initial list to be selected. For example, DeLagoon Park, even though it's on the outside of town, there's 150 acres there, certainly a lot of room. There was no consideration for working together with M State. There's a lot of room over in their neighborhood. And those were publicly owned places. If we were going to look at buying something, there's been some changes over the last couple of years. There's commercial properties that are available now that may not have been then, that probably ought to be considered. One of the ones that I hear people ask about is what about the Sunmart, Kmart, H9 property area, for example? So I think the site selection on this, even though it was extensive by some measure, I don't think it was comprehensive. I think it didn't quite include a number of places that ought to have been considered. And yet, now it seems to have settled on one. And once we hand over $47,000 to US Aquatics to put together their plan, their plan is going to be site-specific. It's not necessarily going to be something that can go just anywhere because it involves engineering and details that are specific to a site. So even though this is a nice plan, the pool plan itself, I think, is nice. I think that there still needs to be some homework done before this thing's ready to go to a vote. And for that reason, I won't be supporting the resolution.
Eric, I comment to some of this.
Yeah, thanks. Yep.
I clearly think there's some not homework done on some of your points, and I just respectfully want to comment on a few. So all the information you're asking for is out there. We have a feasibility study on, performas on what the baler loads need to be, what are the expected costs to run the facility yearly, what's the expected contribution. So we have a performer on who's going to pay for it. Now, that isn't guaranteeing we're going to get that many people through the facility, but that is out there. I'd be more than happy to share it with you. This group started three years ago. To your question about DeLagoon, back in 2006, this, a group of 30 people in town had the same discussion for two years and decided DeLagoon was not the right site. We did look at multiple sites. We talked with M State. They're not interested in selling their property to us. They have plans. There are a lot of things that we did look into. We've been doing this for three years. It's a volunteer committee. None of us are getting paid. And what I'd say is, if council members are interested, we're looking to add people to the committee. Come on and get informed. We're not trying to do anything other than find out from our constituents on what they want us to do. I've heard a lot of people about this pool. You know, I don't have time to answer all of the comments you have. We can talk off-air, but the work has been done. We have a record of it. And, you know, it's open to share. So I mean, I think, to your points, I mean, I understand, new on the council, it hasn't all been there because it's been three years of work. I get it. But we can certainly get you the information so you can make an informed decision on what you'd like to do.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, Caroline, please do.
In the conversation about a yearly open pool with, you know, indoor pool, that was very heavily discussed within this. It's in what people are willing to pay for fees, went and covered for that. And then also, the whole community group that was together to talk about an indoor aquatics facility task force, they ultimately decided that that wasn't the route to go. So that has been done, too.
If I can just add one more thing. The proposal that's on the agenda here for tonight is for two sites to be evaluated in more detail by US Aquatics.
Adams Park?
Adams Park and East Kirkbright, East Kirkbright Site Park. So it's more than just one site being looked at.
Thank you, Ryan, for that clarification. Other comments? Tom?
Just a quick question on sites. Does this proposal limit us to those sites? Let's say that new information were to come to light, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, is this limiting us to those two sites?
The work that will be done will include some more heavily detailed engineering work, taking into consideration the site constraints of each of those two sites. So a lot of work we put into those two sites, it'd be more work to move on to other sites. But it's not, there's no contractor. We're not locking in to say we have to do it, but it'll, it'll be additional work to be done on moving the sites because this will be some detailed work that'll go into, some hard work going into these two sites.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for Mr. Kwame regarding, with the new light of the Kmart and the Sunmart buildings. You know, we don't own those. We'd have to acquire those. We'd have to knock them down because you can't build an indoor pool if you're going to do an indoor with either one of those. So now, all of a sudden, a six-and-a-half-minute-hour project turns into, I don't know, you tell me. I mean, is that something, do you think that that's something we should pursue on that location? Or what's your thought with those two sites?
It may or may not be a possibility there. And I wasn't necessarily lobbying for it. I was only essentially reporting it because it's been asked of me, well, why don't you put it there? I don't know.
Gotcha. Brent, did you have... Well, I have got two different issues. As far as location is concerned, with the two that you've brought up, the one place I want to stay away from is using existing parks that we got. And the reason being is, you've got a lot of low-income kids. You start taking away those parks, and this is a free place for these kids to hang out and play and everything else. That was my only concern with that. Now, as far as the indoor facility, I've always agreed that, for an indoor facility, but I understand the reasoning behind the pricing process of using an outdoor facility. And I basically have backed away from the indoor facility because what I'd like to do is basically see, when this takes off, when it's actually up and running, will it get the draw that we want it to get? If it gets the draw and there is a demand for it, then I'd like to just make sure that when we design this facility, that we leave the option open saying, okay, we may feasibly be able to do this, and if not, then we can just stay where we're at. I would just like the opportunity to look at in the future if an indoor facility is feasible. If it turns out to be very popular and it can be done, and if it can't be done, then as long as the current one is going well, then, you know, I'm happy with that. Thanks, Brent. Other questions, comments before we...
Your Honor, could I just clarify again on Mr. Rupert's question? I want to make sure I answered that correctly. It wouldn't lock us into either of those sites, but if we were to look at another site, we'd have to do all this work again for that other site. If we abandoned one of these two sites that's looked at further.
Sure. Thank you. Anthony?
I mean, I think some of what Councilman Kwame said, I could echo, in particular on the site selection. I've had a number of calls and conversations about the East Kirkbright site, and I think that going down that road is, you know, narrowing us down to two sites at this point in time, you know, I think is going to be a problem in the future. And I didn't hear from the friends of the Kirkbright directly, but I had a couple of people call to say that they would, they would fight and lobby Shippow to stop anything being built in the grounds of the Kirkbright, you know. So I think, you know, and, you know, obviously, that's a site we would also have to purchase. And so I think that that's, that one would also be kind of problematic for me. I think before we, and this kind of bleeds a little bit into the next resolution, but I think before we allow anybody to do negotiation with the property owner, I'd like to, an update on where we are with Schlusman in terms of, you know, we had an agreement with him about renovation and somebody's square feet per year by certain, there were certain milestones. And I think, you know, we would have a hard time that we sold something to somebody and then we turn around and buy it back again, probably at a premium. So I think, you know, the site selection being so narrow, and I hear what we're saying, that obviously, we do this work, and that kind of, it isn't impossible to change horse, but there'll be a cost to change site in the future. So I think, and I kind of think as well that, you know, you know, we were obviously given some information about, you know, the cost of operating the pool and the subsidy. And I think that that one's, you know, a tough one, you know, as well. I mean, if you look at, you know, the numbers for Wapton, I mean, they're almost subsidizing that by about 50%. And, and I wonder how many, how many pools can we have in a community before somebody, somebody breaks, then it's just not feasible and affordable to run an outdoor pool. You know, the cost is greater than what people are willing to pay. Because I agree, there is a price point of what, what this, what you can afford to charge. You know, Parkers Prairie, you know, I mean, they subsidize theirs not by very much money, but, you know, it was 100% donated, so there's no debt service. And, you know, there's no, there's no numbers in there, you know, that take into account repairs and maintenance and ongoing costs. So I think, you know, somehow, you know, it would be good to have a kind of an update of some of those numbers as to see where we, where we really sit.
Thank you, Anthony.
I got a question, or maybe just a couple. So the, I think we asked, actually, US Aquatics to get us an update of pro forma on, on costs. I think to Breck Wap, we got that information, but you got to realize, they have two pools, you know, across the river. They don't have a bigger community to pull from. So I think it's good information, and we certainly need to know where we're at. It's obviously all projections based on, do people come and tend. I guess my question to the council would be, is, of all the information that we've flooded you with, site selection and all the information, are we missing, as an aquatics committee, and this is just me asking the question, not the aquatics committee, but are we missing a site that you would like us to review, or that you'd like staff to review? Because I feel like we, we looked at primarily city-owned lands. We didn't have to have acquisition costs. You know, we've got buildings that have closed in town...
You know, we've got buildings that have closed in town since the last time we did this site selection, but that would all encompass acquisition, demolition, you name it. So are we missing something as an aquatics committee that this council would like to see for site selection specific?
I mean, my preference is not to purchase land.
Well, that was our intent when we, when we looked at. You know, currently, Brian got us a map back two years ago when we started this. And all acreage that was, would fit the scope of our project that we owned, and that was where we came up with the list. I think there was like fifteen sites. We even narrowed it down to twelve and worked from there.
Yeah, Your Honor, if I could, I have a list here of the twelve final sites that were looked at in the first study with US Aquatics. So we did start with a larger group of pieces of land that were eliminated early on, but the final twelve, we did look at Kirkbriide Park in front of the, in front of the RTC, the East Kirkbriide Site that's in question here today. Some land located along St. Andrew Street, near the railroad tracks, near the dairy site. The dairy site itself was looked at, Robert Hanna Park, NP Park, Adams Park, which is the other site that's being included in the request for this proposal, the Levy, Roosevelt Park, land near the YMCA located by the HRA, the YMCA site itself, and some land near Red Sox Park, some open land just east of Red Sox Park. So there was a fairly extensive list that was looked at. US Aquatics toured each site and they listed a number of variables that they ranked those sites on, including site configuration, topography, access, nearby amenities, parking, other constraints, expansion possibility, public benefit, acquisition costs, and acreage. So they ranked those twelve sites on those different variables and came up with a list of top-scoring sites that the committee then discussed and tried to come up with a recommendation to get some more detailed work done.
Thanks, Ryan. Go ahead, Jim.
You know, we asked this group to go ahead and put this whole plan together, and they've come back with this plan. Now, when we have the plan, we want to micromanage what they did, and I think it's ridiculous.
Thanks, Jim. Question, Ryan, or Bridget? The, so the proposal narrows in on those two sites. Does it do that simultaneously, or does it try to get down to one site?
It does them. From what I understand, simultaneously. It would be working on these two at the same time, asking for the information.
I guess my question is, there's a lot of discussion on the site. So my question to you, Bridget, is would this proposed contract be less expensive if we had one site? Or would it be the same price if we had two sites?
Mayor, council members, I don't know. I would like to comment on the concern about acquiring land versus using city-owned land. One of the comments from the consultant was that it may cost as much or more to excavate sites that we currently own versus purchasing land. So the reason that these two are on here is because they do meet a lot of our criteria. However, we do have to weigh those costs, and US Aquatics needs permission to look at both of those things.
Sure.
I am no expert in locations for pools, but I have learned a lot in three and a half years. I respect and appreciate the comments, but it is time to narrow this down is what, is where the committee is and where the members of the council that are on the committee are feeling. We have circled back multiple times on sites over the last three years. These are the two that we need to consider respectfully, is the opinion of the committee.
Thank you, Bridget. And just an overarching comment as far as the cost. Let's not lose sight of the fact that this would ultimately go in front of the voters, right? As a sales tax question. So, you know, the voters ultimately will have an opportunity to weigh in with the final verdict. So just keep that in mind.
Your Honor, for the cost, yes. About the cost versus one or two. So the cost here is based off of a percentage of the final construction cost of the project. So whichever site would, you know, the work could be done on, that project will cost a certain dollar amount, and the cost for this is a percentage of that final project. So it's not a price for two sites. It's a price for a percentage of the final project.
Okay, we have a resolution and we have a second, so we're gonna vote here in the final. Scott, did you have a?
Just two short comments. It would probably seem expected, I suppose, to a degree, that people would wonder if my opposition to this has something to do with the fact that the Kirkbriide Site is one of the two recommended because I've spoken and defended the Kirkbriide quite a lot. And frankly, that's not my concern in this case. This, had it been the one in front of the Kirkbriide Tower Building, I'd have been a little more forceful about it. But this one over on Park Street, if that ends up being the site that's selected, I'm not gonna be the one to stand up and say this shall not be. There were probably people in the group of Friends of the Kirkbriide who would wish I'd have a different opinion on that. But the reality is, I can see it working over there. But as has been mentioned by others, there'd be an acquisition cost and an explanation due for selling and having to buy the property back. And I think that question is what would be a bigger deal. Again, though, on the cost question in particular, when I was making the comparison about who's gonna pay for it, there's two pieces to the cost puzzle. There's the getting it built, and then there's the operations of it. And the information about the use and how the operational cost appears to be close to break even, hopefully, maybe not subsidized a lot, that kind of thing, I think that's great. But the initial six or however many million dollars of it is, is gonna be pretty heavily laid on the citizens of Fergus Falls. And the forty percent of the people that responded from outside of Fergus aren't gonna...
That's not accurate because the sales tax encompasses people that are outside of city limits as well.
Well, to a large degree, that's true. But I would say forty percent is probably pretty generous to throw that in there. And there isn't any way to know that from this survey. I think this, the question of how this is gonna get paid for wasn't addressed as detailed as it could have been as, and that's what I'm asking for.
But, so I can comment. I mean, I think that's already been duly noted, I understand. But at the end of the day, the citizens will vote yes or no on this if it gets to the ballot. And so it's not our decision to decide, does it get built or not? It's up to the city, the citizens, who are gonna cast their vote on the project, or am I seeing this wrong? So I hear what you're saying, but if they vote yes, then they're willing to have a sales tax to pay for it. So I guess that's where I see this being not in our power to decide on building it or not building it. They're gonna tell us what they want or they don't.
Sure. And we're gonna vote on this bill. I'm gonna give you the last couple of comments.
Couple, couple of comments. Your risk here tonight is, you know, this forty-seven thousand five hundred we're talking about because we would pay that out in cash and that would go against the project. The risk would be then, of course, if the voters turn it down, we'll need to fund that because we'll hold it in the project fund, but ultimately, we have to fund that with a source. Right now, we're upfronting it like we did for the library, for, you know, the arena, for the police department even, you know. We upfront these design costs and then we finance them with the project. So I just want you to all be clear on that, that, you know, we'll be paying cash for that in hopes that it passes for the sales tax vote, and then we roll that into the ultimate funding with certainly the fundraising side of that as well, too. Probably, now that I'm thinking out loud, it may be more the fundraising side dollars that come in that would fund that rather than the sales tax dollars. But all part of that financing package that gets rolled together. And the one other thing that comes to mind when we talk about that East Kirkbriide Site, somebody here, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think hasn't, I don't think SHPO's really an issue on that because I believe that property's already been platted as standard residential property because Schlossman was going to build housing out there. So I don't think, but correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it's really a SHPO issue on that because it's really not part of the campus.
Your Honor, I can comment to that. I spoke with the owner today, and he was pretty sure. He said he'd go back and look, but he goes, "When they asked to expand the district, it did not include that. It was only for the buildings that they were looking to renovate." And his understanding is that property, SHPO should have no bearing on any decision that would come on that property. So I think that's a fair assessment.
I don't know that for sure, but that comes to mind, so.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Justin.
I just have one question. Another question for our city attorney. In this drafted agreement, if it were to move forward, do we have, is it a, is it a typical agreement where it would be phased payments to them based upon completion? Or do you pay it all once they've completed the proposal for professional services? And it's, all the deliveries have been there? Or how do, how is that paid? I didn't see how the payment schedule would work, I guess.
It's progressive payments.
payment terms, monthly progress payments.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we have a resolution on the floor accepting a proposal from US Aquatics for the preliminary design work of an aquatics project. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Ryan. Next item would be a resolution authorizing staff to engage in negotiations with the property owners, presumably East Kirkbriide that we're talking about, the site that we're talking about, for that aquatics project. So would someone, we'll have discussion on that. Someone like to offer that resolution? Thank you, Krista, Jim. Discussion?
I mean, the only thing I would ask is that before we vote on it, I would like to know where Schlossman's at in terms of the agreement with the city that we're up to date and up to speed.
Okay.
So maybe then...
Maybe if you'd be open to, could we amend the agreement to just have the negotiations commence, assuming that once we have notification that he's up to, that he's met his requirements? Or do you wanna wait two weeks?
I would say wait two weeks until we get it, if it comes over, if we can get it for the committee of the whole, meaning that it could go at the next council meeting.
Okay, so we do have a resolution and a second on the table. So we'd have to vote that down if we wanna wait until the September eleventh committee of the whole. It's up to the council.
I just, I mean, I guess maybe a comment is, we're not asking to buy the property. We're just trying to find out the cost. And we haven't even got the proposal back from US Aquatics that this would be, you know, the site. So I think we're just asking to start that conversation, but make no decision on that acquisition, obviously. Acquisition won't happen until we'd have a sales tax vote on approval. We certainly don't wanna buy land before we know we're at the approval through a sales tax to build the project. So I think this is more negotiations to give us firsthand at that if that happens to be the land that we would acquire with option to buy.
And I think just a further clarification, it's probably not a resolution. It's probably just a motion directing staff to come back with a, yeah. I think, I think that would be the more proper course.
Motion is fine. Change to a motion, Krista, Jim? Okay. Any other comments before we vote on that motion?
So, just to be clear, what are we voting on then?
The motion authorizing staff to begin negotiations with the, with the property owners. Not to acquire, but just to begin negotiations. Any other question?
To the degree that it would be helpful to have a price to, I will support this motion.
Thanks, Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. Item number aye is presentation of claims. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of nine-hundred-seventy-three thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. If there's any questions, we'll direct those to our city finance director. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution. Resolution, thank you, Tom.
One second, Doc.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. Tonight, under reports from staff and administrative officers, we have a two-thousand-twenty budget and levy presentation. We'll call on Finance Director Bill Sommer. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you. I have extra copies here if people like copies of the budget. I'll leave them here with Brian and Lynn to take care of that. How do you like that? Let's see, Lynn, you have a...
Bill, did you bring popcorn?
I didn't bring popcorn, sorry.
And he trimmed it to thirty-two slides.
It's not gonna be that long, Jim. Let's see, are we, okay, we're on. No coffee either. You're not gonna need that either. Just get organized here a little bit. So, yeah, we are here to talk about the budget. Now, I'll start off upfront saying I'm not looking for any action from you tonight. We're gonna come back in two weeks and ask you to approve the preliminary levy and budget. So here's our timeline. We started back in May as departments of the city working on this budget process, getting requests in from the various departments and compiling them in our finance department like we do every year. If you've been around a while, you've heard me say this time and time again. But in July, the Tax Levy Committee began meeting. And the Tax Levy Committee this year is our mayor, Ben Shire, Justin Arneson, our council member, and Andrew Brensas, city administrator, and Sandy Cunningham, our assistant finance director, and myself. We work with that committee, but those three are your tax levy committees. So they worked hard going over all the different proposals that came in and trying to narrow this down for you here tonight. So we're here tonight to just present this to you, give you some time to think about this as we come back then on September sixteenth for your approval. We do need your approval on September sixteenth because we need to submit our proposed levy to Ottertail County by the end of September. They use that to get the tax statements ready, and then we have a public meeting in December. It'll be our first council meeting in December, that December second after six P.M. That's where we present the budget again in its final form for adoption. We need to get that to Ottertail County then by the end of the year so they can get, you know, twenty-twenty off and rolling. Now, the time period between September sixteenth and December is time. If you, as a council, wanna have some further discussion on some of these items, we can certainly bring that back and have a little more discussion. So that's why we kinda put that, further council discussion if needed. That'll be up to you if you'd like to see some more. So overall budget assumptions, like to tell you upfront kinda what we're dealing with. Wages, we do have a settled contract for twenty-twenty. That is the final year of our three-year settled contract. So two-point-eight percent wage adjustments are in that, are in the budget for that contract. Health insurance, I have some awesome news. You can see it on the screen. We have a zero percent increase. It's been years since we've had zero. This tells me those HSAs that you as a council approve that we implement are working. So no change in healthcare. That is, boy, it's great to be able to say that.
The other thing there, Bill, is the grouping of all the service co-ops into one big healthcare consortium of which I'm the treasurer of this year. And it's really, really brought everybody's rates down.
That is a good comment to hear, too, because we're spreading that risk over a larger pool. So that is, that's good news. Electric, looking at one and a half percent. City utilities, you're gonna notice we're looking at being the highest there at five and a half. I'll talk about that a little later in the presentation. But remember, we're pushing water rates kind of aggressively. We have reservoirs to take care of, water towers to paint, water plant, you know, that's an older plant to maintain. That's what's driving that. So it's more the water side, that five and a half. Natural gas at one and a half. We talked to Great Plains and Ottertail Power to arrive at these estimates. And then the remaining, the insurance ones, we talked with the League of Minnesota Cities, and they give us their opinion of where they think rates will go. So four percent for liability, property at three, auto at two, and workers' comp at four. So that's actually a pretty good rate on workers' comp as well. So the big picture, twenty-twenty proposed revenues, forty million, six seventy-seven, four sixty-three versus expenditures of thirty-nine thousand, two twenty-nine, six seventy-seven. So as you're talking to people, we have around a forty-million-dollar budget. Proposed property tax levy, six million, six eighty-two, three sixty-two. Now, that is actually a change of four-point-nine-five percent. You'll see that in a later slide here. But our tax capacity rate going up just slightly less than that, at four-point-six-six percent. Now, we do not have the growth numbers built in here yet from Ottertail County. We'll get them probably more towards the end of September, maybe even into October. We'll certainly have updated numbers for you in December. As far as growth in the city, if we have new construction... As far as growth in the city, if we have new construction happening, that's going to help bring our tax rate down. There's more of the pie to spread the levy out over when that happens. This change of 4.66 versus a 4.95, that deals with the annexation of Woodland Heights. Remember, we're phasing that in over six years. The first year, their tax rate was 1/6 of the city's tax rate. Second year, a 3. This year, now it's half, so you can see we're jumping up 1/6, 2/6, 3/6, and we'll go up in that direction. So Woodland Heights went up some more, so if nothing else changes, since they're going up some more, it helps to offset a little bit of the rest of the taxpayers in town. So that's why the 4.66 to 4.95. Wanted to kind of just clarify that a little bit. So our total budget broke down in our various fund types. The general fund being our largest fund of the city, our general operating fund, that's where all your operations take place of the city. Special revenue, port authority, library are two of our big special revenue funds, our tax increment districts, tax abatements, our revolving loan funds are in there as well that we use for economic development. Debt service, we pay our bonds from that fund, make our, our bond payments out of their principal and interest. Capital projects, build our, our streets, our buildings, various infrastructure happens there. Enterprise funds, that's the liquor store operations, the water, the sewer, the storm, the refuse business. So they're run as private businesses, they, they resemble private businesses, where the rates that we charge is how we recover our costs. So no tax dollars are going into those. In fact, those funds contribute towards the general fund to actually help offset taxes. Particularly, the liquor store becomes really a gift to decrease property taxes. The other funds, when they pay the liquor store, are paying for services rendered, so they have a true cost in their funds. Last one there, internal service fund, that's our fleet of vehicles. The other departments of the city are the customers for that business. So just a pie chart for you showing the makeup of our revenues. Look at charges and sales are the majority of our revenue sources, so that's all those utility revenues that people pay on their utility bills, the liquor store sales are in there, and also, you know, fees and permits, things in the general fund. Property taxes, you can see, make up 17% of our entire city budget. So still an important part, but just one piece of the, the pie of how it works. Intergovernmental, they're at 17%. Our local government aid is in that number. So certainly a large piece of that as well. Expenditures, where we spend our money. You can look in the upper right-hand section there, wages, benefits and health insurance. So 30% of our cost relates to staffing. Well, we are a service-driven organization, we, we're people that provide a service with equipment. So we would expect to see that. Liquor store inventory, that's just the purchases to make those sales on the other side. Capital outlay, those projects, you can see the others there. So just like to give you a little flavor of how it's broke up. Here's our levy change, I kind of touched on that earlier, going up $315,001.76, or 4.95%. Now, I can probably speak for both the mayor and council member Arneson in saying, by December, we want this number to be lower. So we're coming in higher than what this tax levy committee actually would like to, but keep in mind, we can only go down with our levies by December, we cannot come back up. So we wanted to give you as a council a little flexibility as we work through the fall and coming back with some further things as well. But 4.95 is where we landed for tonight. Again, we'll see where those growth numbers come in for the city, how that impacts the tax rate, and then we can make some further discussions and decisions on, do we bring that down a little more even from there? So it gives us some, some time. A lot of cities do operate that way, they maybe come in a little higher in September and see where those, just what I talked about, where that comes through and we adjust in December. Okay, this is for the process of how taxing works. So the county assessor determines the market value on your property, the property class rates are determined by the state, you multiply that times your market value and you come up with a tax capacity. So that's what then we tax upon, is that tax capacity. You as a city council establish that levy. We establish a flat dollar amount and say, Ottertail County, go collect $6 million 682, 362 for the city of Fergus Falls. You divide that into your tax capacity to come up with your tax rate. And then as an individual homeowner, you could look at your market value, determine a tax capacity, times that rate and you get the tax bill, so. But again, as a council here, what you're setting is the tax levy in dollars. So not the rate, but in dollars. This just shows a graph of where our levies have been, from 17 through projected through 20. So you see, we are on a steady incline there. Tax rate jumps around a little bit. We're hoping with some growth numbers coming through at our next presentation, we can see that tax rate dip down instead of going up at, at that much of an angle. So we'll, we'll know more later when that, when we get those numbers together. This 61.330 is if nothing changes from 19 to 20 on values. This slide just shows those changes in tax rates over the years. You see, we can, we've broken that down for the Woodland Heights annexation as well. And you can see that Woodland Heights annexation tax rate growing, like I said, from 1/6, a 3, up to a half of the, the main tax rate. Then you can see the changes for $125,000 home and a $500,000 business. We like to show you what the other taxing jurisdictions are doing as well. Of course, we don't have the information for 2020 yet, we will have that in December when we come before you for that meeting. This chart will then be complete, but I'd like to show you the information we do have thus far. LGA, I'm going to flip, I made a little note on here, this just shows the history since 2002 on local government aid. The city received just over $4.2 million in local government aid back in 2002 that funded 58% of our budget. And in 2020, we're projected, we are getting a nice increase of $87,000, I know I have that on another slide. So we are getting a nice bump this year, brings it up to 3.76 million. So I know there, the program is getting funded higher at the state and with allocations, this is how, how we're shaking out on that. So glad we're getting the extra revenue this year, it certainly helps, otherwise we'd have another 87 to contend with.
Hey Bill, so you mentioned that that 4.2...
Yep, 4.2 back in 02.
Represented 50% of the...
58%.
Do you know what that is today?
29% today. Thank you, I wrote the note and didn't say it. Yeah, so a big change. You can see why our trajectory of tax levy have needed to be steady, because any increase in our costs as a city, which of course there are increased costs, just like anywhere, our main funding sources are that tax levy and local government aid. And when local government aid has been staying pretty flat, any other increases go in that tax levy. So it's frustrating, we don't want to raise taxes every year, we certainly don't want to do that, but this kind of explains the story of why that happens. Okay, taxes and state aid, a little bit of summary. Our general fund property tax levy going up 253, 373. Again, our main general fund operations of the city. Local government aid, there's going up 85,000, 377. We are losing a little bit of aid, it's PRA aid for our police officers, that is sunsetting in 2019. That has been in place for, I would say, probably 23-plus years, 25 years, and this happens to be the, the last year of it. So next year, we do not have that. And that's in legislation, how that takes place. General government, what's happening? As you know, we eliminated the planner position and we're going with Sourcewell. We've already come to you as a council on that, and we're saving $59,000 in that department. So that is good news. 2020 elections, we're having a primary and a general election. We had none in 2019, so that's an increase of $37,655. We're recodifying the ordinances, you, we're paying a bill for that in the resolution tonight, actually. Upgrading our IT server, we did maintain some capital outlay in those funds, so we're not financing as much, but we do see a little bit of an increase for that and some other supplies and whatnot, for a total of $25,000 increase. We're maintaining our general government building funding at $75,000, so no increase there. But wanted to point out to you, we are taking care of our tax-supported buildings, and that's our major capital maintenance fund for that. Public safety, looking to replace engine number two, we'd probably look at doing an order maybe later this year, if we're still on for that. We would do a down payment from cash that is in the fire department budget. We'd, we'd finance the balance then in 2020. We're also looking at a generator for our fire department, very important piece of equipment that we need as an emergency center, that's $100,000 purchase. So we're looking at financing that as well too, with that fire truck. So kind of bundle those together, package that. We would have a levy start in 2021 then, and I estimate that could be around 58.5. So showing you what the impact would be for the year out from this budget. Woodland Heights area, looking at getting a, a warning siren up in that area, Kyle has built that in our public safety budget. And police department's also been working with Ottertail County at looking at implementing fraud investigations, where we as a city police department would do those investigations, have a contract, Ottertail County would pay us for those services, and we're estimating 58,000 for that. So providing services and then getting paid for it as well, so that's always good. I did bump up some overtime of 8,500 in the public safety for those fraud investigations. So, and we have that net 49.5 gain. Streets and highways, we're still putting in a 20% increase to our seal coats and overlays. We did that in 2019, trying to carry that forward, so that's 62.4. Wanted to let you know that would bring it to a total of 374.4 for those overlays and seal coats.
Hey Bill, just to, can I just make a point there? And that's a 20% increase on top of the 20% increase that we implemented in 2018, right? Just so people know that we're trying to get caught up on the streets.
We're taking some aggressive steps there at that, of building that. Now, when Brian had the pavement management program put together, and they were looking at that, if we do that for five years, that does some pretty good things for our pavement condition index, right? So that's why we're pushing that, trying to keep that, being aggressive on those streets. So we're, we're working on it. Speaking of that, we're taking a big, another big bite out of the pie over in the Mount Faith area, all that reconstruction that's happening right now, hopefully getting finished up now this fall. We bonded for that, those were the 2019 B bonds. New levy then to pay for the city street portion of that of 47.4 in 2020. So construct, bond this year, first payment next year is, is how that works. Parks and recreation, there is a request for an additional 40,000 in there, so up to $85,000 for park-related projects. We will be coming back to you, the tax levy committee's been talking about NP Park a little bit, so we're going to come back to you and talk to you about that. That's why we have 40,000 in there for that. Outdoor rink boards over at Cleveland, this would probably be about half the price of that, so we'd have to save for a couple of years to replace those, but we have 35,000 in for that. We increased fireworks from 5,000 to 7, so a $2,000 increase. Not a big dollar, but wanted to, we talk about fireworks often, so wanted you to be aware of what's in there, so 7,000. We are maintaining the tree trimming and removal at 180. For 2019, we took a big leap, getting the tree trimming back in, so we're maintaining that, that's still in there. And we're getting there, everyone. We're rounding through here. Economic development, Greater Fergus Falls contract, we have 50,000 in the budget for that. The port authority levy, we'll see on the next page, actually going down 50, so it's a zero impact to the tax levy, but looking at funding Greater Fergus Falls. We have a new tax abatement going on in 2020 for 16,000 for the Fergus Care Center, that's the old Catholic charities out by the Humane Society. So that is starting, and that's a six-year tax abatement. Here's the port authority, we talked about that levy decrease of 50,000 to be used for Greater Fergus Falls. And then remember, the Lakes Country Service Co-op project is underway, that level four education facility, that's a big deal. It's using an existing building in the industrial park, going to bring several jobs to town, and the port authority is making that happen, and they'll be made whole through that process. Lakes Country is a wonderful partner, and we're glad we can partner with them on that project. There's a separate fund set up in 2020, it's actually set up now, for debt service on those bonds. So lease payments will come in there, and then we'll make the bond payments right out of there. Again, Lakes Country Service Co-op covering all the cost of that, the cost of the financing as well. Public library, we're in the new facility, operating, things are going well. The total budget there of 930,000, property tax supported 786, and regional library aid 89.6. Wanted to just show you high level, you can see it's mainly funded through the city property tax, and then our regional library aid from the county as well. Capital improvements, what we're looking to do, streets 750, Union to Cascade, Randolph to Mount Faith, there that Burlington, Bancroft. Sidewalks, bike paths, the, the trail section down here that we received the LCCMR grant for, that's in that 700, our annual sidewalk program. And then probably one of these two-block section getting done in 2020 for the amphitheater balcony and trail, that will be going back to the state, looking for state bonding on that. But they're in our capital plan. Okay, the last slides here are on the enterprise funds. I'm going to preface with saying, I have some indication of where we think rates may need to go, but we're going to come back to you this fall and do a full utility rate study, and we're going to, you know, work through those numbers a little more, but I gave you what I know as of today. So, but liquor store, looking at increasing our operating income there, things are going well, our manager's doing a great job, sales are up, he's controlling our costs, so that's going well. And again, the liquor store transfers a lot of funds to the general fund. I don't remember off the top of my head how much, I should have had that written down for you. Oh, we'll get that for you in December meeting. Enterprise funds, refuse here, so this includes our refuse collection business as well as the landfill, going slightly down a little bit here, but you know, refuse is expensive. We're seeing a little bit of a decrease in some of our revenue streams out at the landfill. We're going to be studying that some more and coming back in more depth for you, but showing we're certainly keeping it positive with operating income. But we want to look at all the different facets of it to see which areas and if we need to make any changes there. But with this refuse business, we are estimating the collection fee going up 3%. Now, the disposal fee going up 5.7, because you can see down below, we're expecting a 5.7% increase again in our disposal costs. We dispose of all our garbage with Ottertail County, our costs are going to go up that we have to pay them, so of course, we have to build that in as well. Again, we're going to continue to study that through the fall. Tom?
And I think we've been over this before, but just a quick side note, is it, is it true that the more our residents use their recycling bins, the more money we will save on refuse collection?
You're absolutely right. Get that out of the waste stream and then we're not disposing of it, you know, over in disposal with Ottertail County. Now, we'll have to see where recycling goes in the future, because that's very expensive too on both the city and the county, but as of now, we don't have to pay to dispose of our recycling. So as of now, and you know, yes, we want to recycle more, I, Guy and I were just talking about that last week, as far as continuing to push that more and more and ramp that up if we can. We have a great service, you know, commingled recycling, we only, I've only heard positive things, that people love that. So we're making it easier for them to recycle, so let's continue to push that and get as much recycling as possible.
Let's get that in the paper.
There we go. So if and when we make those changes, we'd look at doing those for January 1st, like the prior year. This is what a sample bill would look like with those assumptions. That comes out to be about a 3% overall, because we would not be changing the tree waste fee and we would not be changing the recycling fee. But the others, it all equals out to be about a 3. Sewerage treatment fund, we're down a little bit here in operating income because we're seeing consumption down a little bit. So even though we raised rates last year, we have usage down some, so we're going to explore that a little bit more this fall as well. But just to keep up with inflation, we look at possibly doing a 3% on the, on the sewer rates. So, and that would be what those bills would look like. Water fund, again, I mentioned earlier, we're looking at being, continuing to be more aggressive. As you recall, we, we did some water bonding and storm sewer bonding for the Mount Faith project. We also bonded, and we have the money in the bank to rehab one of our reservoirs up on the... on the hill by the water plant. That'll probably be done next year, right? So we built those debt service into these numbers. Again, we've got future water towers to paint, very expensive, $750 to probably $1.2 million to rehab. We have the other reservoir to do as well too. So we're trying to continue to ramp that up. We'll show you more of that this fall too and how we compare to other cities as we try to do these here. But we would look again at a 10% increase in that water portion of the utility bill, and that would be there. We did that in 2019. Again, it's aggressive, but I feel we need to. Stormwater fund, looking at going up 75 cents a month on that to keep that profitable. Again, keep in mind, debt service payments, the principal comes out after that number, that operating income, because that's a balance sheet item. And that's what that would look like for stormwater. And then the equipment fund, this is that internal run fund. And we're looking at, we built in a 3% increase for departments and probably looking at planned purchases of $795,000, up from, you know, $7, $750 this year. We have a lot of needs in our fleet. It's a, it's a big fleet and we need to keep up on it. So requested action will be on September 16th. We'll need to set a public meeting date, so we'll be asking council to do that for December 2nd at 6:00 PM. We'll want to adopt a proposed levy and then the proposed budget. Again, we can only come down by December on the levy. And then when we get to December, on that December 2nd meeting, we'll want to adopt the final levy and budget at that time. So I believe that is my last slide. Yep.
Thank you, Bill. So no action tonight. We will take official action in two weeks.
Yep.
Our next meeting on September 16th to set that public, the public meeting date of December 2nd. And I guess I would just say if anyone, if any members of the council or any members of the public have comments, questions, suggestions on this, get it to Bill, Andrew, Justin, or myself, Sandy, before our, before the next council meeting.
Yep. Stop in and see me too if you want to go into something in more detail. We can certainly do that as well, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Bill.
It went a little longer maybe than we thought, but sorry.
Perfect.
Not as long as some years.
All right. I like the positive approach there.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a, and I'll be brief on this because we were all at the, at the meeting. It's a recap of the August 21st, 2019 city council retreat. Again, we were all there, so, but for the public, the city council did hold a retreat on August 21st, 2019 as, and the intention of the retreat was to discuss potential sales tax projects for the 2020, November 2020 ballot as a result of the state legislature's change in their regulations as to what can and cannot be included in a sales tax referendum question to the public. Basically, they've said you cannot lump projects together. You have to have specific projects listed individually on the ballot, up to five. So the council met in a retreat to discuss what we would do, how we would go forward. And they identified five potential project areas for ballot questions, those being public safety, including capital needs for a fire and a police department, emergency response, communications, vehicles, and facility upgrades. DeLagoon Park was a second potential area. Trails was the third. The Aquatic Center was the fourth. And these are in no order. These are just, there was five of them. And streets was the other. And so what the council decided to do was put together groups to discuss what potential projects. Obviously, the Aquatic Center task force already exists, but small groups with champions around those other four potential issues have gotten, have gotten together. And we've asked those groups to come back to the council by mid-October with a check-in update of where you think that particular issue may or may not be going. And then with the final deadline of the second meeting in December, which I believe is the 16th for the council, to have that information so that they could then pass a resolution to bring that to the state legislature. Because again, the state legislature with the current laws needs to approve that before it goes to the voters in November. So anyone have anything to add? You were all there. Is that okay for oversight?
Yep.
Catch it all? Okay. With that, I have no new business that I'm aware of. Just one item for Guy and for Brian that was brought to my attention and I said that I would bring it up. As we look at, I know we've discussed the speed on Alcott a number of times and just, I know that's a county road. It's also brought to my attention that the intersection of Martin and Alcott, someone asked if we've considered if we could look at why or why not we would have a, or why we wouldn't have a pedestrian crossing there. So not, just asking the staff to take that into consideration as we look at other issues along Alcott Avenue. Any other updates? Lynn, do you have anything? No? Updates? No? If not, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Bill.